We know live, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the Policy and Finance Committee of Beverley Town Council. The meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube via Zoom. I'd like to hand over to the Acting Town Clerk to explain how meetings are being used in order to utilise the technology, but also to ensure that we are aligned with the current law.
Yeah, this Town Council approved, delegated powers to the Clerk to make decisions based on the needs of the council. Anything that I do is based on the recommendations, which are technically a recommendation rather than a resolution. So I more or less carry out the work of what the committee's recommended. However, anything that requires a full resolution, if needed, will go to full council where we meet in person. So a full resolution can be officially made at that point.
Thank you for clarification. So we move on to Agenda Item number two, to receive apologies for absence.
Councillor Duncan Jack, Councillor Chloe Hopkins, Councillor Dennis Healy and Councillor Anne Willis, and also we should record Councillor David Tucker and Councillor Claire Wilder, who are the substitutes, but unfortunately weren't available as well, but I can confirm for his requirecys, so we're recorded.
So present, we have myself, Councillor Lynda Johnson, we have Councillor Tom Astell, Councillor Pete Hasdell and Councillor David Horsley. Excellent. So can I ask for declarations of interest by the member of the council in respect to the agenda items listed below? Members declaring interest should identify the agenda item and type of interest being declared. Do we have any declarations?
No.
No, thank you very much. So to move on to dispensations, Town Clerk, are there any dispensations?
None received.
Thank you very much indeed. So if we move on to Agenda Item number four, that is to note the Policy and Finance Committee meeting held on Monday, the 28th of March 2022, which were approved and signed at full council on the 25th of April 2022.
There just a note, Madam Chair, we don't need a proposal or a second.
Noted.
Thank you. So we move on to Agenda Item number five, to review the current account payments made between the 1st of May 2022 and the 31st of May 2022. Does anybody have any queries with regard to these payments?
No query, but just one comment.
Yes, please.
We spent rather a lot of money on the refreshments for the merril, for the merr making. Now, that was inevitable because for all we knew, there might be 50 or 60 people present. But it strikes me that in the current Covid situation, those goods couldn't be redistributed to people who had not been at the meeting. And that's rather unfortunate. We might look at any way of getting around that if we have any further meetings with refreshments before Covid is over.
So thank you for that, David. You will remember that I actually said we should have had a just light nibbles. And that was felt it wasn't appropriate for a merr making buffet. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I don't think that we can start passing food around, especially when it's a buffet. With experience working in the food industry, you do have a time limit for which food can be kept out in a room temperature environment. And, you know, if we start passing food around and anybody that, you know, gets food poisoning from a buffet that we provided, then that could be a liability for the Town Council. So I just think that it's, you know, it's a one off. I don't really see any big issue with spending money on a buffet for a celebratory event. I think that it's something that should be done and should continue. And, you know, obviously, what I might want to look at is to try and get more confirmation of numbers before the event and then sort of maybe tie the buffet in with that. But I think that's just an operational thing for the officers. And I don't really think it's us to start saying that. So yeah.
Yeah, I hope everybody enjoyed it. I will have a little dig. There was no vegan food. So I had a bit of a struggle there. But the orange juice was lovely. However, that's not the issue. I think we can confirm that none of the food was actually, that was left over, was distributed outside of a meeting. Is that correct, Tom? Matt?
Just to confirm, to make sure that we're aware, we came for 40, we did see a couple of quotes and that was a cheaper quote. Because it's a public meeting, we kind of gauge how many are going to be there. But it is technically a public meeting. So any member of the public could have attended and would have been, would have been welcome to attend the reception afterwards. And it's always very difficult when it's something like a merr making, when you're never sure who's going to become mayor until they've been made mayor. So but I think we just maybe need to be aware that in the future, especially next time this happens, it will be in a new council. So we may need to look at controlling figures in terms of the number of people allowed in the Guildhall. We knew this to year it wouldn't breach it, but there is a set number. So we may have to look at next year when there's a new council in place, because people may be changed, etc., how we deal with that for a ticket basis without excluding members of the public.
Yeah.
It's going to be difficult. That was a, that was a, an excellent buffet for the price we paid for it. So I think we should be very grateful to Vanessa's for the, for the quality that was provided. Yes, Pete?
Yeah, Chair, I'd just like to say, yeah, it was a very well attended meeting. And as Matt rightly says, it's hard to judge the, how many people are going to be in attendance. I thought it was a nice evening for you. And the buffet wasn't over the top. And I'd just like to compliment the staff that was involved in making it such an enjoyable evening for you. And of course, the Deputy Mayor, thank you.
And thank Vanessa's for the, for the curve they took.
Absolutely. For what was paid, the quality was quite, quite amazing. So thank you very much to Vanessa's. And also thank you very much to the staff for buying recyclable glasses and plates, etc. So that fits in with our, our green agenda as well. So thank you for that, too. So I need a proposal and a second for those current account payments. Do I have a proposal, please? Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second? Thank you, David. Are we all happy to approve them? Yeah, thank you very much indeed. Can we move on to the credit card payments? Oh, only one?
Yeah, as ever, Madam Chair, this is just the one that we can't deal with at the moment, which is the Google Mail storage.
Okay, understood. I still need a proposal and a second. I'll propose from the chair. Do you have a second? Thank you, David. Are we all happy to pay? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. And to review the bank balances as of the 11th of May?
Yeah, you'll notice, Madam Chair, that as of the 1st of April compared to the 11th of May, it's gone up in the current account. That's the first tranche of the precept.
Thank you. And as we can see, we've got a little bit more interest as well from our public sector deposit fund, which is very welcome.
Yes, is that £150 one month or what? Roughly £150.
Yeah, that's, yeah. For the 1st of April to 11th of May, yes, that's one month's worth of interest. I think we've just got the latest one in as well. So you'll see it on the next meeting, £100 on here.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to just note those, Matt?
I think it's to approve and second them, just so we've got it fully covered.
I do have a. Thank you, David. A second. Thank you, Pete. We're all happy to endorse those. Thank you very much indeed. Okay, so in fact, all four of us here have been mayor. And we know the, the huge contribution that we received from Peter Nendick as our mace bearer. I mean, without him, really, the civic office would be, would be very much bereft, I think.
Yes, well, he has a wonderful way of improving the dignity of the occasion. And at the same time, were necessary, giving it from his vast store of knowledge about proper proceedings.
Absolutely. And as we know, he is, he is in demand by other councils as well, because his knowledge is so great. So there is a motion that in recognition of the support given by Peter Nendick to Beverley Town Council in his role as mace bearer to the mayor, this council agrees to award him an honorarium of £1,200 for the 2022-2023 municipal year. In addition, the acting town clerk to write to Mr Nendick to explain this and express the thanks of the Town Council for his valuable service.
Just for context, Madam Chair, this came from our interim, internal audit. Usually, we just pay the money. But because it's technically an honorarium, it's within the gift of the council to give. So we have to minit the gift of that honorarium. So it's the same as we've always done, but we've got to just do it this way. So there just needs to be proposed on a second. It's that motion, Madam Chair.
Well, I think anyone here would be more than happy to propose it. I've got a competition here. Tom propose, David to second. Thank you. All in favour? Thank you very much indeed. Yeah. And I'm sure Libby as well really appreciates the expertise that Peter, Peter has and, and is so happy to impart, which is fantastic. Yes, let's move on to Agenda Item number seven.
Can I just, can I just say on that point? Yeah, but yeah, Peter does put Beverley Town Council above everything else. And indeed, he has been involved with North York Moors Railway and he's cancelled his appearance up there to be present at helping out the events that have clashed. And so that's how committed he is to Beverley Town Council. And he loves doing the job that he does.
Well, I'll touch on that side of it in the lecture as well as saying about the honorarium. I'll touch on that side of the appreciation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are we all happy to move on to the lamp post project and the need for some funding? I think, Tom, you've got yourself involved with, with the lamp posts illuminating Beverley. Last year, we, like the year before, we were not sent a bill for business rates. And I know the acting town clerk and the admin officer have checked up on this. And no, it's not a mistake. It has been, those, those business rates were cancelled for the second year running, which means that although we certainly budgeted for them, there is now £6,000 sat in, in a separate line, which has gone unspent. And the proposal is to, to buy a £5,000 of this £6,000 across to this project so that we can refurbish the historic lamp posts that are our lamp posts. They are Beverley Town Council's lamp posts. I don't know if anybody's got, wishes to express any, any thoughts on this. Tom, have you got any, any thoughts about this?
Yeah, I do. Thanks, Chair. I think that, I think that this is, this is a good move. I do think that we probably will need some more, that we probably will need, will need a little bit more. But I think the 5,000 is a good start, especially for this financial year, because the project is due to run for a few years. So at least for the initial financial year, we can do it. I think that it's, you know, I think it's good that we're moving the money across. And, and also that we're doing this in partnership with the civic society, although I think it's still to be determined from full council what form that partnership is going to take. But I think that it's, it's, you know, sorry, as in, clarify that comment, as in whether it's going to be a partnership grant or whether it's going to be an actual partnership working arrangement or whatever arrangement we wish that to go in. So I do think that the funds are needed. And I'm glad to see that we're, that we're moving some money across and that Matt's been able to get this done relatively quickly in anticipation of the, of the meeting coming up soon with the civic society.
Yes, I think, I think you were first, Matt.
Just to, yeah, as Councillor Stell was just saying, the meeting's next Tuesday. I'll be emailing out about that tomorrow. And with that, because as was correctly said, this is a multi-year project, but because it came to us after we set our budget, we didn't have a budget line for it. So the Town Council could decide to budget specifically for this going forwards, or that £5,000 is a good amount as a match funding towards another external fund, if that's the way to go as well. I think the, the civic site anticipated about £12,000, £13,000. So that is a relatively large amount of council which decided to fire it. And it will ensure that the work can start this year rather than have to wait for more funding to come in. We do, we just need to, as that group, I think as Councillor Stell said, as that group, we've got to figure out exactly how it will work. The council decided it wouldn't be a partnership grant, but the meeting next week is to decide who would be the lead body. So would the, so that'll decide whether or not, for example, the Town Council pays the bills for it, or the civic society is the lead project of which the Town Council provides the funding to them. So that's the sort of stuff we'll be deciding next week. But we needed, the council needed to figure out what there was available to move it on.
Thank you, David.
Yes, this is something in which I've taken some interest for many years. And I have photographs of the lamp posts to prove it. But I was still surprised to discover that this was the largest group of early lamp posts anywhere in the world. And I think it is our duty to see that they are kept in tip-top condition. They don't seem to be in poor condition at the moment, but, but you need regular maintenance to keep that the case.
So, so thank you. So I mean, this, if the, if the view is it's going to be a £12,000 to £13,000 cost, and we've already found 5,000, then it means we haven't got a huge amount to find next year out of the budget for next year. So I'm, I mean, I'm just, just quite keen that we make sure that we have ownership of that, of that group. And although we might be working in partnership, they are actually our assets. So are we happy to propose this, this buy-ment of money? Yeah. Both by Tom, seconded by David. Are you happy with that, Pete?
Agreed.
Yeah, fantastic. Wonderful. Excellent. So if we move on to Agenda Item number eight, additional Jubilee budget. So of the £6,000, we've just agreed to buy a £5,000 over to this new project that we have running with regard to the lamp posts. That means there is a thousand pound left and there has been a request to buy that remaining £1,000 as additional support for the Platinum Jubilee budget. Matt?
Yeah, we've, the budget's been used, used more than total. And there were a few items that have come up over the past week or so. One is one of the primary schools that you went to as mayor to speak about bunting has requested some financial support to that. Well, we can't just give them the money for the materials. In fact, we buy some of the materials and deliver them to them in the next couple of days. So it's, it's for that. Plus, one of the issues we'd had was first of all, finding a location for them, finding the beacon that was used last time. And even if we could find, we're not exactly sure where it is, but I'd be wary of us using something that's been locked up and potentially getting a bit damp for the best part of a decade, that's going to have gas and flames around it. Peter, Councillor Peter Stell was concerned as well. So Councillor Stell's been doing some digging. And I don't know if you want to update the committee, Councillor Stell, on what's happened, why this money would be used as well.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And Matt, yeah, I've managed to source a beacon. There is none to be had at all, other than going direct to Bruno Peak, who is the Queen's pageantry master. And I know him from the 2012 Diamond Jubilee celebrations. And he has agreed to let Beverley Town Council have a spare one that he's got. It is in Norfolk. So Beverley Town Council will be pleased to know that the Queen's pageantry master has let us have one, because the chances of us getting one would be nil, because there is a hefty waiting list. And unfortunately, like Matt says, I'm having, we've had trouble trying to find the original one, which of course, we purchased in 2012. And in any event, I think, as Matt rightly says, that it's, it's 10 years old. And we don't know the condition of it if we did find it. So that's where we're at with this, Chair. Thank you.
Just to add to that, Madam Chair, the, the cost of a beacon is £500, but Mr Peak is still, we've referred to apart with it £460. So the committee agrees in principle to that as well. We can draw up a cheque. It's beneath the amount, I need, it's beneath the amount, but I need permission to, to give. It was best to bring it through this committee. And Councillor Astell will take the Town Council van to Norfolk to collect the item. So, so the, so the buy-ment of the £1,000 would cover the costs of that, of the, of the petrol of the item, plus supporting potentially the primary school with materials, and then leave a little bit of money left over that we may need. And anything, any money, if there is any money left over from the overall budget for the Jubilee, that will then be via to something else.
Well, that's all news. I mean, it's great, isn't it, that one of the junior schools, I've only been to three, and, and that one of them is actually biting the bullet and, and making some bunting, which is fantastic news. So, and I think it's great to be able to support them as well with that. I'm cock-a-hoop that we've managed to find a beacon. I really am. I think, I think it would have been a crying shame if we hadn't been able to find a beacon. I think that would have looked pretty sad, really. So well done, Pete. Thank you very much for sorting that out and for offering to go and get it as well, which is, which is amazing. Where is that beacon likely to be sited?
Natalie's liaising with St Mary's. So you have it, have it on the land around St Mary's. So part of the rules, I've got to have someone with it all the time, etc. So at least it would be on for a Thursday evening. And also because we then have, we have it for all future occasions as well.
Fantastic. Right in the middle of Jubilee. That's, that's amazing.
Yeah, Chair, it's just a pity that we cannot get a permanent beacon. And possibly, it's something that we could, we could seriously look at for future. It's something that's happening now. Various towns around us have seized on the opportunity of, of getting one made and putting, putting place. But as I say, that's something for the future. In the meantime, we've got this. And thanks, thanks to Bruno. He's really pulled the stops out for us. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much indeed. And, and yeah, this is, this is really good news. And yeah, I quite agree. We should have a, have a permanent beacon somewhere in Beverley. It seems a crying shame that we don't have, really. I'm more than happy to propose that. Do I have a second for it? Please, thank you, Tom. And clearly Pete is, is well in line with it. But just for the record, are we all happy to support that idea?
Agreed.
And just to ask, Madam Chair, if you're, because you're so happy about it, are you able to pop in tomorrow at all in the morning, sign payments and indeed the cheque for that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We didn't get a vote from Pete, but I'm sure he's some, thank you, just for the record. Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item number nine. More good news as well, which is great to have an agenda full of real positive stuff. A tree for the Jubilee celebration. So to consider using funds allocated to the St John of Beverley Tree project to purchase a tree to mark both the Jubilee and act as a place of remembrance regarding local people lost to Covid. Matt?
Yeah, the, we always have the idea that on the day, because it'll be the first major event that towns had since the pandemic, there'll be some sort of, just a moment of commemoration regarding Covid. Natalie's been liaising with Reverend Becky Lumley to do, to do a short, a few minutes in Coronation Gardens. I've been liaising with the civic society who have been really instrumental in the, the planting in Coronation Garden, which is, which is owned by the St Mary's Church, but general maintenance by the shriding. But it's a civic society that led until managed the design. There's nowhere to really plant a tree at the moment. There's a tree that could be removed at some point. And even if we wanted to plant a tree, it's the wrong time of year to plant a tree. So the suggestion, the alternative is that we buy a potted tree that is meant for a pot, that isn't meant to be taken out elsewhere, that can be placed in there for the Jubilee event. And then maybe he's found a more permanent home somewhere. As we found out when we were doing this, John's, we couldn't plant anything in the Minster grounds. But for example, St Mary's may be happy to have this within their grounds if it's in a pot and not actually affecting any of the, the works beneath. The one thing we need to do tomorrow, myself and Libby have a meeting with JB Rural, our contractor. One thing we'd need to do under the civic society's request is make sure that tree is watered once a week. We wouldn't involve a huge bowser. I think it could be manageable to make sure it survives. But hopefully, if it went eventually maybe to the ownership or somewhere like St Mary's Church, they'd be able to maintain it. It's a way to be able to use our budget for a tree. It can still be part of one of those trees for St John, will fulfil this act of remembrance for the Jubilee Day itself.
Excellent. Yes. Of course, the, the great thing about the St John planting project is that because of the Haywoods, although it's not called Haywoods anymore, the Northern Forest Project, we've actually had thousands of trees already planted in, in Beverley, and they have been paid for by the East Riding of Yorkshire and various other groups that are increasing our tree cover in our least treed county in England. So the money that we had allocated, we haven't had to spend. So this is fantastic that we can spend it on this project. The tree that we did plant for St John of Beverley is going into a sanctuary garden, which is being built at the Minster. So that is an oak tree. So that will get transplanted at some time in the future, but it's doing very well at the moment. It's well looked after and, and thriving. And I think it's just fantastic news that we can, we can increase our tree cover in this way and use our funds so positively. So do I have a proposal for that? Oh, Pete, did you want to speak?
Yeah, yes. And in proposing that, could I also take it that along with that, there'll be some sort of plaque going with, with the tree?
Yeah, I was about to add at the end, that would be for a plaque as well to say who purchased it, who, the reason for it and who commemorated it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah. So you're happy to propose, Pete?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Say, do I have a second? I'm happy to second. Yeah, that's fine. Carid? Yep. That's fantastic. Wonderful. And now we move on to the assets register. So it's more positive news in that we are moving forward with regard to the recommendations from the internal auditor. Matt?
Yeah, the asset register, it's something that we're still working on. And it factors into the end of year internal audit, because it is such a relatively big job to put together. It's a significant piece of work, but it's got a long way there. Carol's done a lot of work on it. So if I could have asked Madam Chair for permission to thank Carol, Oliver Row Finance Officer. So i- if I could, I have, uh, ask Madam Chair for permission to thank Carol, um, Oliver O'Fine, um, officer, who's done a lot of work on this. It isn't, what she's done isn't just a sheet of what we've got. It's what we've got and then the details of where they are. So the front sheet says 40, 40 cast iron lamps. There's a back sheet which explains what, what the locations of all those. When you think about that with all our other lamps, all the plants, everything. It, it had to be quite, quite, quite a hefty document. Um, from the audit, the, the, the end of year interim, internal audit, there are some things we need to, um, revise on it. For example, we need to put replacement cost, we need to put a custodian. So, so in most cases, it's the town clerk. But if, for example, we, um, have, we, there's a piece of equipment which JB Rural use that they, that we all that they take with them, they are classed as the custodians of that, so it's all recorded, who actually is, is in custody of, of which items. Um, so it's, it's still developing. We're gonna, again, when we talk to JB Rural tomorrow, we're gonna talk to them about assisting with this more. Um, because whilst they're contracted for 15 hours a week, they don't usually work that. They don't charge us for it either. But we do know that, so, so we're not losing any money. But there, there are jobs like assisting with the, um, with the, um, asset register. And there are other things that we need to look at as well as to how we can potentially change it. For example, there's items that are at the memorial hall that were bought 20 years ago with money from the Golden Jubilee, some crockery and cutlery. They're still classed on our asset register. I'm going to suggest to full council that they gift them to the memorial hall because that's where they're used by the public. And therefore we no longer have responsibility for them and after them as, as an asset. Uh, we, uh, but most of the things that we have are within our ownership, but we need to go through them properly. I know it's something we're going to be talking about at, um, planning environment and services as well regarding the, the, what's at the, taking the unit two lockup. Um, but it's, it's, it's a work in progress. It's a big document and we will get there eventually, but it will take some time.
If a job's worth doing, it's worth doing well. So, yeah, if it takes time to get it right, then so be it. David?
Yeah, presumably some of these assets are fixed assets where the value is not expected to change significantly. Whereas others will be declining assets where, having bought them, they will lose a little value each year.
Yes, and, 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 and some things, for example, like the cast iron posts, if one of those went, the cost of those two places is higher than a regular street lamp. So he's, he's doing that sort of work to it as well. And making sure that everything should be on it, is on it. Because there, I think you, you'll learn when, when councillors have the meeting with Safia on Thursday night, you'll learn there were some things that, as officers, we discussed and I agreed shouldn't be on the asset register, but maybe should have been because we viewed them as consumables. So there's, there are, you know, there are, there are discussions we have on different items as well, because it's, it's, it's a moving feast all the time. Some things come in as an asset, but that we may let go of them. And so that they become consumable after assets, for example, hand waving flags.
David, do you have anything else you wanted to comment on? No? Anybody else got any more comments? Yes, Pete?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm pleased, um, that we've got to grips with this. And, um, I had a talk last week with Matt, um, and we do need, um, a serious look at, um, the lockup and, and, and other areas and that PES are responsible for. Um, and I know that Matt, um, is going to, like he said, he's gonna have a word with JB Rural and report to PES next week. And, um, and from that, from there on in, um, we should have a clear, um, understanding of what assets we've got, um, um, valuable assets as well.
Thank you very much for that, Pete. I mean, there are some policies that need to be, uh, reviewed this year going forward as well. So, um, I'm sure God knows on the agenda, um, as and when.
Yeah.
If there are no other further comments?